You don't want to second yourself? I will get that corrected. My goodness gracious, figured you'd second yourself. That's what we're doing today?
Alright, we'll go ahead and call this meeting.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings you've given all of us, Lord. We just ask that you just be with the commissioners today as they go through the county's business. Keep everybody safe and sound, and in your name we pray, amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The honor of the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and infinite. Yeah, table, I think we did get moved.
Okay, at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action could be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
Guys, I've got a, oh, just a little deal on tax abatement. Now, y'all are gonna review, this is a contract from Anell, which was formerly W G K, I believe, or W K G, W K. Something like that, I've written down. And all I wanted to, sure y'all are aware of some of this, but it's been brought to my attention that several things are, with these wind and solar farms are what should be done and what we're asking them to do, instead of having it in a contract. After speaking with several other counties, they've gotten over, I've had several people approach me about making them hire local companies, use local labor. You can't do that, you can't hold on to that. I'm not asking you try that at all. You know, there's several things, like I mentioned last time, fuel, certain things that they're gonna have to use, they're coming here. I would strongly advise not abating them at all through the county. Let the schools abate these as they needed for I N S, helps them financially a lot more with the school system. They're getting federal abatements across the board, they're gonna do these projects regardless. I'd hold their feet to the fire on what they have to do. This first two-page deal is just their tax rate, started back, or three-page, sorry. Started back in oh eight. They paid the hospital district, and it's under my understanding that's only because the hospital wasn't an entity when this all came about. There in oh seven, and even oh four, when the contracts were signed. They had a district, but I guess they weren't a taxing entity. That's what I was.
A district.
They weren't a district entity.
Hospital district always, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But we're late, weren't we, the wait?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, either way, they didn't abate this, and you can see their tax revenue through the start of this project. From construction on, and Hermally stepped in after eight years, looked like giving them an eight-year abatement to the hospital, and then the next six, Hermally had stepped in. And got that, and if you look over at your contract, on the tax.
Let me, let's, let me do this, I know you, this is a, if it's something that's not on the agenda, can I have you wait just a few minutes? And we'll go over this during the public hearing? I hate to cut you off like that, but I want to make sure that, I don't, that we can't cut you off, and we can have some back and forth and some feedback on this, because this part, we can't really give any feedback on. Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, presentation and discussion of department head committee and board reports. Y'all have a chance to look these over. Yes, sir.
This little lady that we hired.
Yes, sir.
For the Houston. It's just, thank goodness. I would like to report like this from every department. Once a month.
Okay.
And that way, we know what they're doing.
Okay.
Because she's not here, but we know.
That's a concise and to point.
Yeah, yeah.
Not a. No, thank goodness. Well, I like it, she does good.
She does.
And so do a lot of others, even though we don't have their reports, they do great, we just don't hear from them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when they come and present it personally.
Can do that for sure. Not send that out today, let everybody know. Anything else, sir? Court consider approval of previous court minutes?
You have a correction?
Small things, nothing major, I highlighted them.
Okay. They are picking on me today, aren't they?
We know you can take it.
Yep.
Anything else on those court minutes?
I'd like to imagine we can approve the previous court minutes as presented with corrections.
All in favor? Court to discuss inappropriate project schedules and staffing. Anything going on?
I spoke to this morning Canyon Wind Project, which is our. They are sending me all the roads, all that mess to get that started, so apparently it's on its way. And when I get it, I will get it to Mike, and we'll start jumping through them hoops as well.
Okay.
On the Cedars grant, I just submitted another request for reimbursement on project one, and I'm about to submit another one for project one, but I have no other projects in process or anything done, so I don't know, are y'all working on any of the other?
We're preparing, you, are oils out there that you can use during the winter that we didn't used to have? But the problem is aggregate, and without aggregate, it don't make, what else you have, you can't do the job. And so we are preparing, we're hoping we're going to get the aggregate that we need, but it's still up in the air. I've talked to Vulcan, I've talked to Sandmill, and Victory Rock over in Big Springs, and these wind farms and sun and solar farms are, and a lot of times, even Ari James. They'll be out of it, and so it's been very difficult to get it, and it's, I'm, we're, beginning, we're trying to get an extension, because I, just because of lack of being able to get the aggregate that we need.
Okay, if y'all can just make sure that when y'all do get ready to start it, or whichever project it is, to let me know, so that I can make sure to get all of the documentation and get it submitted. I have to submit monthly now. And even if there's no, nothing being done, I have to submit something saying there's nothing being done in any projects for this month. So, I did just submit another one, or I'm about to today, for project one. But, because the bill is being paid in the payable, so, the last date of February, but I just need to make sure we're still on the same page on that.
That's why we didn't do anything, we're gonna widen block line.
Yeah.
Probably, we may end up redoing all of it, but you take that rock, where do you go?
And you don't have enough millings to widen it, it's gonna take a lot. And so you run out, and that's as far as you got with millings, and there's so many things we can do with the millings other than that as well, we should put rock down.
You got an idea for the millings?
I know. I know you.
I gotta keep that in, kind of up there somewhere.
It's been a while.
Where do we stand on the country club bill? Getting that out there?
We need to schedule it, for sure.
I know some of that stuff's blowing around.
And I think that they, they got all the loose stuff the other day, I suppose, and Tommy and the orange crew, and with City of Snyder, and they were gracious enough to take out a roll-off for us, and Tommy was taking a trailer, loading it up, and putting in the roll-off, so. I told, I asked him, anything that's loose and can blow away, please help us there, because, I mean, we're, we are so busy in our precincts, that it is very difficult to lay off of what we're trying to get done, because we know Cedar is coming up. And as soon as we, if we get aggregate, we're gonna have to go to work, no doubt.
I think, and his guys are a little concerned about the black mold.
Oh, oh no.
There's not any.
Oh, no.
Well, it was in the building, but it's, it's not something that they need to be concerned with as far as.
It's not in the debris or anything.
It's in the debris, but they won't, they're gonna be in, if they haven't, if they're concerned with it, they can wear masks while they're cleaning. But I don't think that's gonna be an issue, they're gonna be in.
Our cabs are filters.
They got the rat filters, they filter very.
Well, they can, you can get them, because I was talking, I've talked to all these guys that, what it's like, tear down buildings, they've got the carbon block filters that stop that, so.
And then once it's exposed to sunlight, this stuff does.
So it's not in the block, it's in soft material, it's in anything.
Yeah.
It's, it's not in those concrete blocks and in the.
It's the boost.
Other things that are there.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what it is.
It's gone.
And we can get them respirators if we do it.
We just got some, oh my gosh, you know.
Sure, I understand, absolutely, let's get them some respirators.
Of course, asbestos is a concern also.
It's gone.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, sir?
Nope.
Alright, court to consider accepting donations to county entities, we have senior center, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Hold a public hearing to discuss the renewal or reauthorization of the guidelines and criteria for the tax payment guidelines for Scarry County, and we'll start that at ten thirteen. This is what we're, go ahead and get into your stuff, Cody. Come on up, we'll, let me kind of lay out what the, what the guidelines are for, it's for agriculture, agricultural facilities, distribution center facilities, manufacturing facility, facilities, office buildings, regional entertainment tourism facilities, research facilities, regional service facilities, historic building in designated area, wind energy facilities, residential commercial property, renewable energy facilities, or other basic industry. And wind and solar is typically what we have had come to ask for these. And it's not just an abatement, it's not just a total, you don't have to pay anything at all, it would do a payment in lieu of taxes, so they'll make payment for a period of time, so.
So, in this contract, it shows that W K N would make thirty-five years on page four. Down in D, one and two, first five years annually, it pays sixty thousand dollars. Year six through ten pays seventy cents. If y'all are seeing those payments made somewhere, I'd like to see where I'm missing this.
The opter has.
Yeah, they, they pay them, there's a, I mean, they were paid, I think Anell's already done, they've paid up. Yeah, they're, but they're payments that they pay, there's a line in the financials, that's in the first part of it, it's like a due to line, or it's in a ten-three-three-three.
And that's not a public record on tax?
It doesn't, it doesn't go on the appraisal district?
No.
Like that, it'll show zero as a tax?
But even Ms. Young told me that.
Now, they're not abated anymore, they're done, so it should be paid to the tax office, but they did pay their abate and stuff, and I have record of all the years that they did pay that. I have not had anybody request that, though, so, but I have the record from the years that they did pay their abatement. But they're no longer abated, so they're supposed to be paying.
They're paying full amount.
Yeah, and that should be on record down in the tax office.
Okay, and she told me, the only reason I asked, she told me that it shows nothing, that she received no payments on this first.
She wouldn't.
No, her abatements.
Yeah, the first part she wouldn't, but I received those, and I have records of those.
Yeah, they just write a check, so.
Any abatements, whenever there's an abatement, and they do start making payments, those come through the treasurer's office, and they're received in a different line completely from the tax office.
That makes sense. Well, then on page three, under C, it shows that to commence construction by September one of oh five, they're telling me this started in June first of oh seven.
A lot of times because of.
So they let it go.
Being able to get certain parts, or even the turbines. In fact, they didn't even know what they could get, and so they took whatever they could get at the time, and sometimes they weren't able to get started at the time that they thought, so they come back to the court to ask for a lengthened amount of time to do that.
Battery storage, actually just did that, they were expecting to start and be finished by the end of last year, or by December twenty-one. They weren't able to get started until just this month, so they came to us in November or December and asked for an extension of time on that.
And we do, I'm familiar with that, we do it. With counties and something that rise with two years, you know, it states in here that this contract will be fully voided, and they'll pay their taxes if not, which it was gone back and.
They renewed it.
And given to them.
Yes.
They assign it over.
Yeah. Many of them have been kicked out that way.
And all I'm saying is, they have this plan from the beginning to assign this over to another entity. All they're doing is getting their federal tax credits, their green energy stuff, and rolling it over, they're getting plenty of tax breaks, there's no reason that we should hold that and take that as a county, let the schools have it, it benefits them, I understand that, but as a county, they're gonna build it here anyway. And even if they don't, let's go ask these six landowners, and I know that's a whole separate deal, at least between them and this company, and dynamite these, and blow them off over there for generations to pick up, that will not be a two- or three-year deal, it won't be a ten-year deal. I mean, you're blowing smoke, if you tell me they're gonna pick up all this fiberglass and everything, when they set off a, you know, hundred and fifty to two-hundred-foot turbine in ground. And I know that's between the landowner and everything else, but we shouldn't be helping that, when they're gonna do it anyway, right here. I should, firmly had, they didn't abate, they still came and built. They're gonna do it, they're getting their federal income, or their federal taxes, that's the reason they're in it, they're just playing a game, y'all know that. I mean, surely, I spent three hours on this, just putting this together, and what I've learned in that, y'all deal with it every day and have for years. All I ask is that and thought, and not just saying, please come here and anything out of it in return.
We do get money in lieu of there.
Correct, but upfront, they come in, we tell them, it states in this contract to try to hire local, try.
It does.
Try, and it says, please use, let me find it, it states in the tax review of the. Coordination of local hiring and services on page nine. Says owners should use reasonable commercial efforts to maximize Scarry County labor. All that statement is, come hire our employees from other local construction companies when you come to town, is how I read this.
That's not what we discussed with them in court, though, we discussed this with them in court, that they use the companies that are here, for as much as possible, there are things that, there are companies, there are not companies here that are able to do.
Right.
Like the.
Oh, and I agree.
Know that, but.
And I don't think that's a battle that we should take on with them to even try that, but is there a liaison with the county that goes and holds them accountable for that?
I constantly, I constantly talk to them about using local people.
Is there a penalty clause where, if they don't?
Not, no.
Anything of that, where the abatement goes away if they're not doing these things? I mean, I've.
That could be a good idea, right there.
What I've heard from this court, this, you know, several believers in here, I believe in accountability very strongly. And you have to do it, or they're gonna run and turn and say, there's nobody in Scarry County that could help us that has done this. Well, the reason is, yeah, we may not have put up a wind turbine, but we're all coachable, you know, we know how to do things, they're using an excuse to use who they've got going around, which is fine.
The contractors I sent the names to you for, have you been in contact with them, and they're telling you that they can do better?
Nobody's even responded.
So, as a business person.
Called back.
As a business person, you got to continue to do that, we can't police that.
No, and I'm not asking.
No, I know you're not.
I'm not asking it at all from a business owner standpoint.
But then we'd also have to police whether or not, so we'd have to, I mean, as far as, if they're using local contractors that are capable, so fuel, for instance, absolutely can use local contractors for fuel. And if they're not, then we need to have some kind of feedback from those local contractors, because we've never gotten any, I've never gotten any. And if you don't get local contractors and owners of businesses that are coming to someone and saying, look, y'all said in court that they will utilize local contractors as much as possible, we sell fuel, they're not using us. And so, you know, that, we, we can't go out and police that ourselves.
We can have something in a contract.
But we can certainly talk about it.
Liaison, that we're gonna charge you sixty thousand dollars a year to man, you know, for a man to police this, hold you accountable, and if you don't go by this, your abatement goes away.
So you're, you would ask the court to hire someone to be a liaison overall?
That's what it states in this contract, that we have a liaison, that's what we told them in this agreement.
I guess liaison would be the county contractor that's in their precinct, but you'd also then have to be an expert on, you wouldn't on all of it, I'd assume. You would have to know enough about the different types of needed companies to be able to, I mean, for fuel, that'd be simple. Are you using one of these people in local that are, their fuel, using, are using their fuel, and they say, well, we can get it twenty cents a gallon cheaper, well, that's a deal that you work out with that company. That would not be something that we could tell them to do.
Well, and that goes back, I guess, to my original.
But how do they get it cheaper? Would be my question there, how do they bring it in from outside on fuel? I, you know, the rest of it, I don't know, they've got companies that are in your business that do wind farms constantly, that are expert, experts what they do, and so then you'd have to prove to them your expertise in that. Building roads, for instance, that is not something that anybody can do better than a local contractor, in my view. And that's what you can do, you can build locations, you can build roads, and them not using you unless there's a, a large variance between what you would charge and what these guys have come from, what, Illinois?
Yeah, that's what I mean, they're gonna be here anyway, and that goes, I guess, the first point was, don't even worry about the liaison then, have it in a contract that they use X amount, percentage of contract on Scarry County services.
Regardless of.
State of Texas does it, yes, Texas out projects, where they're women-owned or minority-owned business does it, they hold them accountable. Those guys have to prove back up that they're using three or five percent of a woman-owned or minority-owned business. There's no reason we can't do the same thing, they're gonna come here anyway, if you don't give a full, you know, if you don't say absolutely no to the abatement, I, I mean, in my opinion, I think that it should be mandatory that so much revenue is spent here in Scarry County on upfront construction, they're gonna be here.
Yeah.
They're gonna come, they're already got their federal breaks, is, I'm, sorry, I can't find that liaison and stuff in here, but you can look at it. I mean, this, this contract is just, to me, was a good example of somebody that never planned on hanging around. They got this deal figured out, they're from Italy, they're coming in here, getting their tax breaks, spending that money elsewhere. They didn't care about Scarry County, our citizens, our landowners, or anything else, and I'm sure there's some companies that do a little better and try, but.
Hey, Cody, page thirteen, D. Thank you.
Is that what you're talking about? Owner or the prime contractor shall designate a coordinator of local hiring and services who will act as a liaison between all contractors and any, and any individual? That's not saying Scarry County, that's saying the contractor will have a liaison.
And certainly, the, the company.
But that's something that we could definitely look at.
I mean, definitely, I highly doubt they had to drive around Snyder, knock on every door, what do you provide? You know, can you help us with this, when he locks our gates?
Well.
Oh, they did it, I mean, now you can guarantee.
Well, they have some.
So that's not, that's my big deal, don't even have it, we're wasting paper and words if we're not gonna hold anybody to it.
We don't have a list of all the contractors either, that are here in Scarry County.
No, and that's not.
I personally couldn't tell you, you know.
I think that's their job to go out, I mean, as a business owner, it's my job to go out and promote myself. You shouldn't be my salesman sitting here, I'm not asking that at all. I'm saying that my biggest deal is with solar and wind, that we know they're gonna come, let's quit giving them, you know, I know you have payment in lieu of taxes, but let the school districts, they're gonna gain more from that than anything, let them make those abatements if they want, for their debt. And the county, I strongly believe that the county shouldn't do that, they're gonna come to Scarry County anyway, make them pay for it.
And an example of that is one we just looked at, where it's two counties, it's Borden and Scarry. He sat right here and said that, and I talked to the county judge, he said, if Scarry County says no, come and see me. Wasn't gonna put any of it in Scarry County if we said no.
That's fine, in twenty years, go drop out here and go see what it looks like, twenty years later. I mean, you're not doing a service to our residents and your constituents.
What, what do you mean? What about the landowners, the landowners?
Landowner agreement, but.
They're making, the landowners, landowners are making a lot of money off of these agreements. You know, you have people denied because of some of these agreements.
Willing to write a letter, and I hadn't had time, I several different businesses, but they, they said if they had it to do over again, absolutely not, they would never do that, for what these guys did on their property.
What was their complaint, do you know what it was?
No upkeep at all that they promised they're gonna do, and then the way they tore them down, you know, and that's, that's their. You know, and that's, that's their fault.
Yeah.
They should have had it in a lease that they ran them down with a crane and haul them off.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, that's a train wreck, and that's on their hands, you know, that's, that's nothing that we had anything as a, I'll say, we, court had anything to do with or could oversee. But that's.
A local contractor did make a lot of money remediating those towers. Just talk to him, just talk to him. And, well, do you have, do you have, I mean, that's something, whenever you've got somebody that's coming in here and trying to do that, that you'd need to go out and say, look, I can do that too. But I, I don't think you have the specialized equipment that this guy has to, to break up those towers you made out. Do you have huge shooters on your, is that something you did?
No, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, you get one? And that's kind of up to the, the owner of business, you know, that's what I do. I go out and, and, and talk to people into using what I do. And so you, you've got to compete against those of you doing the very same thing that you would do yourself. And you know that.
Cody, I, I like some of those ideas.
I do too.
I like requiring a percentage of contractors being lawful, I really do. And I like the clawback court if they don't.
I agree.
It's something that I'll have to check with legal to see what the legal aspects of doing it is. But it's something I'm more than willing to bring back to this court to, after one, after I find out about the legalities of it.
And I would certainly think it would be legal, just because we've had that done here already. Whenever they were building the law enforcement center, if they, if it was not finished at a certain day, they would start having to pay us $15,000 a day for that lack of being.
Yeah, well, I mean, finding out legal wording.
Yeah, of course.
That type of stuff.
And the attorney, county attorney would have to get with their attorneys.
Right.
And work that out.
And you're gonna have specifics in everybody that comes to you, I mean, we get MSAs weekly that I don't sign, because they want to pass them 90 days. Half the time, they either sign it or send it back at 3:35, we don't do it. We're better off for it, just like this, if they don't build it, we're better off for it as a county. You're not hurting anything.
My understanding is they're gonna reconstruct all of that out there with larger winter line there where you're talking about down on 180 that will pour them down.
On Camp Springs Road?
It's on US 180, between US 180 and Camp Springs. Yeah, 1121 is the road, the county road they use. And then Camp Springs and 1105.
Two of the landowners, two that I talked to said they had no, haven't been brought back, that they're walking away from it, is what they told me.
Is that what they're saying? Because they have, they have went back and forth as to whether or not that they would actually bring in.
Right.
So they may not, I don't know. And if the landowners don't want it, they certainly won't.
Right. Well, and I think especially in the second phase, you don't give them any kind of abatement. I'm working through a deal at Sterling right now, that he held their feet to the fire because they said they're gonna upkeep these roads, and this is a landowner doing that. Tell them no, made them crush an extra 400,000 tons of material, and they said they weren't gonna do it. Well, they go back and look, yeah, we are, you know, we're not gonna just let these turbines sit or take them down, they're gonna do it, there's. I mean, it's, that's all I'm asking you, consider that, that, you know, and not just giving a full abatement on, on any of them that we know are coming. And especially when they do something like this, you know, they, they could care less, I promise, how any of us feel about our land at the end of the day.
I am, I am gonna recontact those contractors I sent you names of. If, if they're not contacting you back, then they're not doing what they told me to do. And so I'll see if I can't get them to, to do that. I've, I've given those names out to several contractors, and no one has called me back and said, no, they didn't, they didn't contact me. So, and we need to know that. Because we're interested in, in you being utilized in your business, you do a great job, and I see a lot of your work and appreciate you being.
Appreciate that.
You're a part of our community, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, I, I just have a question.
Sure.
If, if it's in the contract that y'all are, have these requirements, who's enforcing them for the county? With the liaison?
That actually is. Yeah, that's the general contractor's first liaison, as said.
Well, if they're not providing one, who's enforcing it, if they do?
If, if a contractor were to come to me and tell me in my precinct, if someone was building a wind farm, I would be enforcing it as much as possible. I don't, I would be calling and talking to them, saying, you said you would use these guys, and now we're your liaison because they're not being utilized. I've never had one contractor in the last 17 years contact me.
So the contractors need to contact y'all to enforce.
They're, we're not being utilized.
It would come back to Commissioner's Court.
Absolutely. I don't think it would have to. I think that a commissioner talking to them would get it done, and then if it didn't, we could go to that step.
Right. But yeah, if it doesn't, if they don't do what they're saying, they're gonna have to.
You would need that clause in there.
Right.
That states, okay, if you're not gonna use these guys, we can already see you're not, you're using out of state or whatever contractors that, that are building your roads, then you owe us this much a day for every day that you're not, or a month or whatever.
Right.
So I agree, I like that, I mean, that's a good idea. Absolutely. Make them pay.
And I'm sorry, so those contracts will then, I mean, how would, how would Mr. Wall know that that's in the contract and that they, they may have a, a concern, a valid concern or not a concern of those contracts on the website and out, you know, or that?
We hadn't put them all on the website, I think they're, they're at the clerk's office, they're all public record.
Most of, all the abatement contracts are in her office. There's a bunch of the old ones I don't have.
Gotcha.
I had to get it from her.
She do?
A few of the newer ones I do.
And I need to copy of the newest one, I mean, the one, whatever happens today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is, this is the guidelines and criteria, so you need a copy of that.
Yes.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing at 10:36. Do appreciate all the. Court to discuss and consider the renewal or reauthorization of the guidelines and criteria for the tax payment guidelines for Scarry County. The criteria is currently the same as it has been with the things that Cody brought up, do we want to pass it today and bring this back later? Or do you want to table it today and look at bringing all these in there after we talk to? But if we don't have anything in place, then?
I, I think that it's not this particular document that you would need to add to. It would be those contracts.
I agree.
Those contracts were, you know.
Abatement is fine.
Okay.
Whether we give an abatement or not, going forward, doesn't matter.
Right.
There's the guidelines that we have. And if we're going to give an abatement, these are the guidelines we will go by.
Absolutely.
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And like I said at the beginning, it's not just.
Oh, no, it's.
Wind and solar.
No, it's tons of stuff.
Lots of facilities can come in, even an office building. Add at least 100,000 of the tax rolls and create at least five new full-time jobs.
I make a motion that we keep the rules and regulations of the tax payments the way they are and renew them.
All in favor?
I should have said guidelines, I'm sorry.
I knew what you meant.
I'm used to rules like that.
I knew what you meant.
Court to discuss and consider joint election and election services group between SISD and Scarry County.
Okay, um, Snyder SD is gonna have a school board election this year, so it will be on the same day as we are having the governor call for a constitutional amendment election. So we will be holding for the school, and of course, we've already approved, already approved for the city, because they have a councilman position too. It's just easier to go ahead and put them all on the same ballot. That way, everybody with us, having countywide voting, just makes it simpler for, anybody can just vote for all of it at once.
I have a question on that, and this is not, this is under constituent, not it. So when you have a constitutional amendment, you know, and you have a city council, but if you don't live, like, I don't live in the city, so I don't vote on city council, but I would vote on constitutional, so it would be like the.
We have, the computer, yeah.
Just have just those.
We, yeah, we have like, we're gonna have like six, I think, actual ballot, what they call ballot styles. So when you register at that, our machine, it knows what ballot that you are allowed to vote on.
And we'll still have all sites open?
Yes, well, uh, no, only place it will not be open. Ira will be open, Hermerly will be open, the library here, and the Coliseum. It'd just be the Armory.
Both sides of Coliseum?
No, just, just the, we have, that's your side, so we have to have one in your side. Yeah, Jim's side, Jim, we have to have one in each commissioner, so Jim's is Hermerly ISD, so yours will be the Northside Coliseum. She's the library and he's Ira. So we got everybody covered.
I'm making a motion that we allow the joint election agreement points not to SISD and Scarry County.
Can I sign?
In line.
Court to discuss and consider use of archive funds for a part-time salary in the county clerk's office.
Okay, here's what we got. Celine is going in a little different direction with her career. She is choosing and, but she still wants to be able to work part-time. So, since I don't have that in my budget at this moment, I have talked to Kirsten, I've talked to Angela, and we, since what she will be doing on a part-time basis is scanning, indexing, the thing she will be doing does qualify under the archive fee, which is a fee that I can't use for anything but that. It has to be used for certain, for archiving and records management preservation. At this current time, I have $479,000 sitting there. So I want to get an okay from y'all to use that archive fund in order to pay for a part-time salary. So it won't come out of tax dollars, it's only gonna be coming out of the fund that we collect on fines and fees and things like that. Part two of this is also because Celine has been at this county for 16 years. She has all this experience. I would like to keep her salary at the same rate of pay hourly. She will part-time, so she won't have any benefits, she won't be doing any, none of that will be coming, she's just strictly her hourly pay, and it'll be paid out of the archive fund, not the tax dollars.
The only thing is, I'm arguing, didn't we set the part-time at maximum $12 an hour?
But there has been, I believe there has been some other departments that y'all have waived that and allowed because it comes from another fund. There has been another, some other precedent set with doing that in special circumstances. I believe there was, I don't remember what department it was. EMS has done it.
None of his part-time people make $12 an hour. And I think it's very clear as to why they would not make $12 an hour.
I would think that with her experience, that certainly made sense to, and coming out of fines and fees, that would, would be one of those special situations where we could do that. So I make a motion that we allow Melody's to hire or rehire at part-time Celine, or this particular job be paid out of the archive.
I would like to know what the hourly wage will be.
Whatever her.
Whatever, I don't know what Celine's hourly wage is, do you?
Merit and longevity, with the base merit longevity, her hourly rate is 2264. Without the merit and longevity, just her base, it's 1968.
An hour.
An hour.
And how much is EMS's part-time?
Depends.
Depends on if it's an EMT.
Yeah, depends on their experience.
Yeah, it depends on.
Their experience.
He, I mean, I think the lowest one is around 15, 18, and then it can go up from there.
Basic. Yeah, basic EMT, no other credentials, or very, very much time served.
Yeah, it could be just one coming out of school, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we could continue to pay longevity on part-time.
No, what's it else we can say?
Yeah, that's what I kind of, I knew in retirement, and, no, she keeps her retirement, she can still keep paying into the retirement.
Yeah.
Oh, she's full-time, part-time.
Right.
Yeah, but even if you have a part-time, there's certain requirements for the part-time, so it still goes.
We've, we've really cleaned that up. If they're not temporary, then they should be paying into retirement.
Right down, full down. Yes. And it's coming out.
Right, it's coming out the. Yeah. I know, you got preservation, records management, civil. It's confusing.
There's a lot to be said for experience.
And it's, it's gonna be a big help, because I've, we are snowed under, we're all behind, we're all snow, we have been super, super busy. So this extra person helping part-time is gonna be amazing.
And that's, that part of it is absolutely required.
Yeah.
And you have no way around it.
She's, she's, yeah, that's what she does for the most, and she'll be doing it, like I said, she'll still be coming in part-time to do the recording and the scanning and the indexing and all that.
Having her while you're trying to train somebody is gonna.
It's gonna be wonderful.
Especially if you're already behind.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion, a second to move to discussion.
It's whatever Celine's.
Is it gonna be the night?
Base salary.
Base salary plus merit? Just base salary?
Yeah.
Or base salary, okay.
1968.
1968. Okay.
Heard that was a good year, I wouldn't know that.
It was.
I wouldn't know that.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Court to discuss and consider, let me make sure I'm at the right one. Court to discuss and consider 30-foot access easement, 60-foot minimum, or meet the county road width requirements for a public road, whichever is greater as stated, and veterans land board financing. So Mr. Abel Delora came to me with this, said he'd never seen it before, but it is something from the veteran land board, there, there's property that has a roadway easement through another property to get to their property. It's 30 foot, it's been 30 foot wide. Since at least 2015, probably longer than that. The veteran land board says that their minimum is 60 foot wide, or meet the county road with requirements for a public road, whichever is greater. However, if they have something in Commissioner's Court that says that we are willing to, it's not a county road, it's a private drive. If we're willing to allow that 30 foot, if they, if we send them something that says that we're allowing the 30 foot, they'll go with that instead of requiring the 60 foot easement for this.
I couldn't find that exception. Where, where's it at? Because I don't mind doing the 30th one.
That's what, the veteran land board pulled him specifically.
I went riding. I don't wanna do something that.
How long is this road?
It's.
1381 feet. 81 feet?
Yeah.
Like I said, it is a private drive, it is not.
But it doesn't, it doesn't say that, it says whichever is greater, and there, I don't see the exception for the county.
No, I'm saying that the, the actual property is a.
I understand. I see that it must be a documented record in the county, so the clerk's gonna have to keep this, but it's whichever is greater, and that's 60 feet. And, and if, if there's an exception, it needs to be in writing. If we're going to. If we're going to agree to.
Let's, you hear with me just a moment, I did bring my phone, let me leave my phone to Paul Abel.
The guy gets the, we do that, the guy get, doesn't get the loan.
You?
People act as soon, I just.
No, not this day and time.
I don't mind helping anybody, especially a veteran, but man, if you're gonna be an exception, let's see it. Now, I don't need to, I don't need to talk to Abel, I need to talk to veterans.
Veterans Land Board.
Get them on the phone.
Sixty foot's a whole wide room.
Boy, isn't that right?
Camperers, sixty foot.
Yeah.
You know what, we're in the middle of discussing your, um, request from the, for the Veteran Land, Veterans Land Board. Can we get in writing from the Veterans Land Board that they will accept? Can you get in writing from the Veterans Land Board that they will accept from Commissioner's Court the thirty-foot easement instead of the sixty foot? The commissioners are requesting that in writing. Now, it says sixty foot.
Minimum.
Minimum. I don't see where it says unless, it says be a minimum of sixty foot wide or meet the county road with requirements for a public road, whichever is greater. Connect with both the tract and a public road. Clearly define the designation of a public road. Must be a document of record in county and.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Not sixty foot.
It, it doesn't matter on there, it says minimum of sixty foot or meet the county road with requirements for a public road, whichever is greater. Yeah, what's county road requirement?
It depends on the classification of roads, but not sixty feet.
What's, what's the. For county road?
Narrow road, we have forty feet.
Forty feet.
It also says whichever is greater.
But you're saying.
Yeah, whichever is greater for cash.
The question, the, what the question is, is will the Veterans Land Board give you in writing that they will accept thirty foot? If the Commissioner's Court agrees to thirty foot? Okay, all right. Okay, sounds good, thank you. All right. Okay, I wanted to, I know he's in a time crunch on that, so I wanted to, uh, verify with him. Didn't want to table it. Um, he said that he will work on that today, right now. Uh, he's requesting to approve it pending that approval. If we don't get that approval or get the written notification, he goes away.
Nullified.
Yeah.
Just make sure you, I thought that way in a minute, I'm trying to seem more of a.
Without, without approval.
Written approval.
Okay.
It'll all move away.
From Veteran Land, Veterans Land Board.
I would think he would also want on his agenda that, which we do not have any, but I would, I mean, it says strongly recommended that be in court record, you know that.
Void.
Right.
That we don't have some of these rules, or if we do, what are they?
Yeah.
That's his, that's his deal.
Yeah, he didn't bring that up.
I wanna cover all the bases here.
Absolutely.
I don't mind to make a motion to allow this thirty-foot easement when and if the Veteran's Land Board, uh, gives an exception in writing to the county.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's nullified.
Uh, unofficial of the Veterans Land Board, no sector.
Exactly. No, it's gotta be signed by.
I want somebody that has.
That is George P. Bush, he's the chairman.
Right.
Yeah, we want somebody.
So is that a motion?
Yes, it is. Very many.
All in favor? Courts, Court to discuss and consider the Arch Renewals or Confirmation Agreement.
So this is our yearly Affordable Care Act reporting renewal. I would appreciate if y'all would sign and approve this. There is no fees associated.
Fees are waived.
As long as we have tap health insurance.
I'm gonna make a motion that we renew the Arch Renewal Confirmation Agreement and that you, uh, you need to write the sign.
All right. Uh, Treasurer's monthly report and personnel report, you want to do both or just one?
You can do them both, um, is there any questions from you on these reports?
Good.
We did have an increase in cash, um, as we saw the final amounts from the, um, tax collections come in. Um, otherwise, there are no real changes from this month over last month in the Treasurer's report, and then as far as the personnel reports, um, we had a couple of changes, but nothing significant to report.
Thank you. You're keeping us apprised of the situation.
Y'all ever have questions, just let me know.
Who all was the Hill community, this, this, that twenty-eight hours, just all over here, there, yonder?
It was just one, it was Dana Hartman. She, um, put, um, due to COVID, um, numbers at the increase in January. With the state of Texas still being in a state of emergency, then it still fell under the ability to pay her overtime.
And she's still getting, she is working a lot of hours.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the Treasurer's monthly report as well as the monthly personnel information report.
All in favor? All right, Court to approve, consider approval of line item transfers and budget amendments?
I have one of each. Line item transfer is EMS, two thousand and two closing allowance and out of operating supplies, um, to get some new uniforms. And then the, uh, budget amendment is for Commissioner Court precinct one vehicle expense, three thousand eight fifty to reestablish balance on the line of paying outstanding invoice for repair to his commissioner truck.
Did you pick up that?
I knew it was coming. That's about four thousand dollars this year. Yeah, it's more than that, forty-five hundred. Yeah. Yeah, it's dying, the little symbol, the engine symbol comes on, has twice now.
Hold on, it's only fifteen years old.
That's all I do, my own.
I make a motion that we approve line item transfer and budget amendment.
I heard a new one, Judge.
That's what I had to.
It's cheaper, cheaper to spend the four thousand.
So far.
Court to consider approval of accounts payable.
Accounts payable is one million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seventeen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Thank you. All in favor? Jim? Just you and I, you agree?
Yeah, yeah. Great for you, Darren. Yep.
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you, Cody.